Recording in progress. We are starting late. We had a few technical issues to take care of, but now we are ready. So, welcome if you are watching this on Zoom. I think we might have one person joining us tonight. So if you're watching this recorded, this is the official public budget meeting for the town of Reedfield for 2026. Our new fiscal year. Eric will tell you how many meetings we've had, but the Budget Committee has had many meetings. We've been informed after each of those and had our own discussions. And there we go. So I am Catherine Mollwoodson, the Chair, and from the Select Board we have?
Sean Kagan.
Steve DeAngelis.
Jeremy Shaw.
And from the Budget Committee, anybody have any comments? Nope. Okay. Take it away, Marty.
Okay. Hi, I'm Marty Hanisch, current Chair of the Budget Committee. Here tonight from the committee, we have Chris Salmons and Alan Schneider. And we're all eager eagerly awaiting to see the numbers. So I, but I do want to make one short statement about the Budget Committee. The purpose of the Budget Committee is to add some non-wards and non-employee insight into the budget. We're really like representatives of the the public, observing how the budget gets put together and asking questions along the way that we think would be important to the members of the public when they get to vote on the budget. And we had eight meetings so far, not counting tonight. And without going into any numbers, I can tell you that Eric has been, has done a very good job on the budget. Everything has been explained to us. It's always difficult this year. There's a lot of uncertainty. But we think that the, that Eric and the staff have put together a very reasonable budget.
Is there anyone online who'd like to make any comments? Seeing none, we will move forward. So we've had seventeen public meetings and discussions to help develop and discuss the budget since October. There has been reviewing comments by member of the public, boards and committees, the Budget Committee and the Select Board. We've reviewed all the budget details for departments and divisions, and we've revised, reviewed and revised the five-year capital plan and supporting policy. For our town, we start off our budget process by going through the capital investment plan and seeing where we're at and what projects are on the horizon. Marty, back to you.
The public budget meeting goals. This is to present the budget for 2025-2026 for the municipality. We're hoping to hear and be able to answer any questions, concerns and comments relating to the budget. We're also looking to highlight and discuss key warrant articles relating to land use, the land use ordinance, and to provide information on the upcoming town meeting and secret ballot vote. The ongoing budget goals that guided the Select Board and Town Manager and Finance Director include to maintain fiscal responsibility and spend conservatively. Fund all needed and necessary expenses to maintain our town and programs. To minimize budget impacts on taxpayers. Maintain a stable and sustainable level of debt. Use fund balances responsibly. Utilize a long-range capital planning process to consider the town budget separate from the school and county budgets, although they figure very heavily into the funds we need to collect. And to work together towards the public good. And I'm pleased to say that from the perspective of the Budget Committee, we did, we did follow all of these objectives.
Thanks, Marty. Our specific goals for this coming fiscal year 2026 is pretty much decided when the Select Board has their annual retreat, which we try to hold in the first or second month of the fiscal year. And that was to prioritize completion of projects and process. Those projects are a sand and salt shed, the church road sidewalk and Reedfield Fairgrounds Community Park. You will not find any information in here on the sand and salt shed because that's going to be moved forward to some unknown date. More about that in the coming year. We wanted to improve the municipal use of technology and Jaren worked a lot with Eric, who worked a lot with his employees, and we've made tremendous progress on that aspect. We continue to improve communication and collaboration in the budget process. I don't think we did a whole lot to improve it because I think it's been pretty darn good and we're not getting any feedback from the public that we're missing out on things. So I think that's more of a continue. And we wanted to better define capital projects and further develop the capital investment plan, which as I noted earlier, we do in the fall every year. So Eric, on to the budget.
Okay, thank you. So I'll start talking about the big picture, which includes two, two key items, property values and lottery. And this year, as in years past, we are factoring our property values in order to keep pace with the state of Maine. We're looking at a 25% factor applied to residential commercial properties, and that follows several years of five, 10, 15% increases. Try to keep pace with this real estate market that we've really, everybody's been struggling to keep up with. This is our fifth year of doing that. Hopefully it's our last year. I expect that next year we will be working with actual or more current numbers from our revised communities, property assessment, and that the real estate market will have stabilized some. Our assessor says he's already seeing signs that things are struggling to control a little bit, and that's, that's good news. You know, I personally hope they can step back a little bit, having not purchased any property recently, but but all but seeing what the impacts are on the community. But in any event, we, we expect that when we do factor that 25% increase, if expenses and revenues were the same as the prior year, we would see a 25% decrease in the mill rate. This year, we're not seeing a decrease in the mill rate, or we're not seeing a proportional decrease in the mill rate because expenses are up and revenues are essentially flat in that. So the mill rate for the town of Reedfield, for the municipal portion of our mill rate is 2.15 and the total mill rate is 12.13. And that includes county and RSU. So you'll see later, that's we're about 17% of that total tax commitment and mill rate. And then last year was 13.39. So you can see that there was a decrease, but it certainly wasn't 25%, which is what the factor will be on values. Moving on to school and county budgets, we try not to comment on these too much, but we want you to know where the information is for these. And so school budget information is available on the website. The county also has budget information available. RSU 38 budget is expected to increase 2.35% or $102,000. And that's about 74% of property taxes. The county budget will increase 14.6% or $65,830. And that accounts for eight point 5% of the property taxes. And again, town of Reedfield, I'll step back. We're looking at going up just, just a little bit on our end. So this is what the relative property taxes impacts look like. Top line, red line with a large dash is the RSU. And these are individual values. They're not cumulative. So the red line is a red line, the blue line is a blue line. It's not an additive thing. The blue line below that, which is smaller dash, is the town tax impacts and the black line at the bottom, solid line, is the county taxes. And you can see everybody's been, you know, struggling to stay flat. It's, it's hard. And we're seeing some acceleration from, from all, all three of those components of the tax bill. Municipal, municipal property tax impacts. This slide shows what the out-of-pocket impact is for the average home. Which in Reedfield, believe it or not, is now about $380,000 for a home and some acreage. That doesn't include the, the homestead exemption, which pulls $25,000 off of that value. This is just a straight value for an average home. And the impact is around $816 or $817 for for, for the average resident, and that is about a $60, $63 increase from the prior year. So about 9.3%. One thing I want to point out is that when we look at the, the last really good, stable year that we had, which was about 2018, the increase in out-of-pocket tax impacts for the municipal portion of taxes has only gone up about 12% since that time. And that is a good thing because it's, it's kept taxes low for a fairly long time. However, it's a bad thing because it might not have been enough. Looking at things and seeing where we are now, you know, not keeping pace with inflation, we've been able to find efficiencies, but it is catching up with us a little bit. And we're seeing that with this year. This year's budget, and we'll see it again in future years, as we try to, you know, balance all of this out. But the message I have from this is we've done as well as we can for as long as we can with the resources we have available. And here we are. So I'll move on to fund highlights, and this is what we talked about, those reserve balances that we use to help stabilize the budget. And they contribute to not only, not only the stabilization of the budget, but also helping to cover the cost of capital improvements. And these are the balances that I'll show you coming up are conservative, but they're based on audits and reconciled data. So we have a pretty good idea of what these fund balances look like. We just need to make sure that we track them. And this year, we've actually started to do a bit of a projection multiple years out to help us really hone in on that stabilization, again, because of how important it is for, for the tax rate. And so due to intended use, those balances have begun to drop, and that's one reason why we're paying more attention. The use of the undesigned fund for this year is down by about $11,650, and the use of a designated fund is down by $25,000. Those are modest. I expect that the use of the undesigned fund will drop even more in future years. We do a policy that says that we should maintain two-twölths of our expenditures for the total budget, including RSU and county in reserve, in undesigned funds, and we will meet that policy this year. Next year is going to be a little bit closer. And so this shows our trajectory. The red bars, which are the bars on the right, excuse me, on the left, are the fund balance, and that includes things that are already, already assigned, right? So things like capital reserves, they're dedicated, those are dedicated reserves. And on the right-hand side, the blue columns, that is the unassigned fund balance. That's the money that's available for again, that two-twolths policy, but also for things like investing, maintaining cash flow as we go up and down through the course of the year with taxes coming and going and expenses coming and going. And the star just indicates the current year we're in. So you can see that we're very close to an inflection point and that we are working to try to increase gradually, again, our assigned fund balances and kind of slow the, the use and descent of those unassigned fund balances. The current budget and long-term debt service picture is also very important. Debt service is another resource we have for stabilizing the budget and paying for capital projects. And we've done very well with this in years past. We've been able to reduce this. But, but also we're, instead of putting money into paying for bonds, a lot of it's going into reserves and is being expended as we go. So there's some value in that in certain cases, but we do have a very low debt load and certainly could take on more. But then the debt payments do become a factor. So what we see is we're in the middle of a kind of a gradual decline for debt service. And we will have another payment in a few years that'll drop that even more. But this is what we want to see is a gradual decline in, in debt. And in the future, we will need to be purchasing things like fire trucks, but that's hopefully 15, 20 years out before we have to get another one. And we put a lot into municipal buildings lately, which has also kind of helped clear the deck for a few decades, I hope. So revenue highlights, I guess before I get into expensive revenue, any questions from either board? You've all heard this many times, but I just wanted to, anything you want to highlight, anything?
Great, John.
Okay, I'll keep going. Got my water, so I'm gonna have to go through this quick so I won't get thirsty. Revenue highlights. One of the things that we do see every year is an increase in our property tax base, and that's a result of things like new construction renovation. Those improvements and new construction have slowed quite a bit. I expect they might even decline in the near future, but for right now, we're basically holding steady to prior years, and we only expect about a three-quarter of a percent tax base increase. State revenue sharing estimates are up slightly. That's based on experience and the numbers we receive from the state. And their data, I think, shows some stability going forward, maybe a slight decline in their revenues, but outside of legislative action or changes in the governor's budget, those should stay fairly stable, and I think that this 385 is pretty reliable. Investment income is up in part due to more investments and relatively high yields. We do also see motor vehicle revenue being up by $25,000 to $650,000. Again, those are the budget numbers that have increased. I do expect we will not see that $670,000. And we might even be a little bit close at that $650,000 that we're budgeting currently because we expect pretty significant tariff impacts that we're going to have to deal with, but hard to tell what's going to happen there. As Marty said, there's a lot of uncertainty. We're just kind of going along with a, with a fairly conservative approach, recognizing that things might not work out. In undesigned fund, use of designated fund balance, we have $21,000, and use of designated funds, we have 325. Undesignated. That isn't right? No, they've all said designated, don't they? There's a typo there. On the fund balances, the second one, 325,000, should say undesigned funds, not designated. So this table that I'm showing now just summarizes the basic changes in revenue by department. I highlighted the major ones. And what you see here is a 3.8% increase in revenues. That does include tax commitment as well. So on that first line, Department 10 Administration or Division 10, excuse me, you'll see that that taxing amount is gone, is up significantly. And that's a combination of all three school, county and municipal tax impacts right there. Moving on to expenses, Administration, labor insurance costs are really driving our increases in that area. And that's the case throughout. There are very few departments that don't have labor or material type increases driving, driving the, the price of things. Office equipment is up by 17.5, but that's in large part because of computer software costs and hardware and also our standard office equipment. The one note I'll have here is that we'll probably be saving money in a few different areas. We will likely see some electricity savings. We will very, we'll certainly see productivity increases. So even though we might be paying a little bit more in certain areas, we, we will see better productivity from staff through the use of this software. In most cases, I'll say not all, we're still kind of getting used to some of the bugs in the new trio, but we'll get through that as well, just like everything else. Assessing is up to cover the full cost of online GIS software. Grant writing and planning was reduced by $5,000. And that's just a, a straight short-term budget cut. I hope that we can continue to put money into grant writing and planning because those dollars pay a tremendous dividend in the end. If we are able to get support and be successful in grant writing, that's, that's a payoff. So it's a short-term cut, I hope. Legal fees are down by $5,000, and that returns us to a normal level of spending of around $10,000. For example, this year right now, outside any, you know, significant legal action, we've only spent about $3,000 on legal services so far. And we'll have town meeting, which adds a couple more. So we're actually in a pretty good spot with legal services, and I'm happy to report that we're finally back to normal on that. Maintenance Department, we are up a net of about $2,000, and that's again, labor materials. Community services, the library is up 1617, but that's due to labor, and that's the same 3% costing wage increase, not cost, not expense, it's wage. I guess it's all three of those, but that's what we see across the board for all employees. Recreation products and activities, beach expenses are down over $2,000, and that's due to, again, what I hope are short-term maintenance cuts, staffing. I think we finally found a good balance there. We don't necessarily have to have 80 hours of staff time at the beach. I think we can get by with 60 or so. That gives good coverage, you know, stops people from using the beach who aren't residents or don't have passes. And helps prevent some of the nuisance activities like people bringing dogs off-leash and smoking and things like that, that just, we want to keep an eye on some of that stuff. So any of that, we, we produce that level. On protection, the fire department, I will give a lot of credit to. They actually trimmed their budget in various ways. And so the fire department budget is down. However, we're trying to deal with increases in two other areas that have caused pretty significant changes. First is a 23%, there's 2% things there, 23% increase in the ambulance cost, and that's a $14,000 difference. Next year, we're going to see another significant increase there, roughly equivalent, maybe it's a little bit less, maybe 10,000. But this is part of a two-year effort to But this is part of a two year effort to. A Winthrop to increase the revenues for the ambulance service. It's an important service, and we generally agree that it's it's worth doing, it just doesn't feel very good when when you're on the. Receiving end of a twenty five thousand dollar tax increase over two years. Dispatching is up thirty three percent estimated, we hope we can get that down. We've already made pretty good progress on that, I'm right now expecting a seven thousand dollar increase, worst case scenario. After our negotiations, but as most of you are aware, we're still working to. Try to bring that down to a a an appropriate level, which would be a one to two thousand dollar increase. That may happen through negotiations with Winthrop, and they happen through switch to a different service, but that's. For the Select Board to discuss and consider coming up. Cemeteries, our budget is up twenty five hundred, but that is to account for a stipend for the cemetery sexton. And we have a corresponding, but not entirely equal, two thousand dollar reduction in the Maintenance Department budget where the cemetery. Sexton position was previously held. Roads and drainage were up over twenty four thousand dollars, and that is for both summer and winter roads combined. A big part of that is the increased cost of materials for both road materials and salt, we've seen a lot of salt usage, and we expect that to continue. Finishing up with expense highlights, we have solid waste, those are up about three percent, again, that's almost exclusively due to labor. But it's it's scheduled, debt service, a small decrease of twenty three hundred dollars, but you saw that on the graph. And unclassified, we reduce contingency by five thousand dollars, again, that's a just a straight budget cut. And we hope we we found a balance there, and we haven't cut too much, but we certainly made an effort to produce costs where we could. The last item are the capital reserve and special revenue transfers. And we see this is where money goes into reserves for future use, in some cases, current year use. But without getting into great excruciating detail, we'll just kind of lump it together and say, this is what we're doing. Cemetery is five thousand, transfer stations fourteen thousand, that is one of those combined usages usages. And that is actually just the town of Reedfield share, other towns contribute a similar amount to that, so we can have a good reserve there. Municipal Buildings is forty eight thousand, Roads is three hundred thirty four thousand, and I can say that most of that will be expended in the next fiscal year. We have a lot of projects planned, also, there's some money in there to continue the the planning process. For the the salt sand shirby, it's been a big number of existence for five years and longer. Admin technology, this is five thousand dollars to support the second half of the buildup of a low power FM station. Which we're continuing to make progress on, Fire Department, twenty five thousand dollars, this is to cover things like SCBA packs. Equipment repair, if we blow an engine in the fire truck, that kind of thing. Maintenance, this is reserved for our equipment, trucks, chippers, all of that, also lease payments for for any of that equipment that's ongoing. And the total there is four hundred sixty thousand dollars, and you will know that is one of our largest, you know, budget areas, but. Reedfield, I I have noticed, in fact, will really appreciate and puts money into our capital assets, and this is the right. Direction, I really appreciate this money going into reserve for these purposes. So this summarizes the. The expense in a tabular form, again, three point eight percent, it matches, it balances with the revenue side, that's what we want. And that's really it for the budget, a lot in there, but I'm happy to take any questions or comments. From folks online in the room.
Well, there's no one here in person, and it looks like we might have one person online, if there's any comment you'd like to make, you need to raise your hand or. Guess that's how that works, right? Also seeing none, I have just a couple of comments, just more for the board to remember, we need to. Explain maybe more often, Eric, about the low power FM station that's coming, that we're building out, I know that you have. Or volunteer, community coordinator, working on that with a bunch of different folks. People will be interested in that, I'm sure. Yeah, is part of the road budget, the three hundred and thirty four, the capital reserve for roads, is that being spent this year?
Well, it's it's a combination of the projects that we're looking at, covered two different years, but yes, we are looking at. This year and next, but that three hundred thousand dollars will be fully expended by next June.
Okay, and that's all because we have the road management system where we're spacing out. When roads need to be fixed, how much needs to be fixed on them, and trying to pull that together so that we get a good price for the work being done.
Yeah, absolutely, and and just make sure we keep up with those investments, and then the road committees are a part of that, I just think back to their role. In in helping to to direct that, because it is, it's just an Excel spreadsheet. And along with some GIS backup to it, but they really give the eyes on the ground and professional guidance on that, so. They really have been a big help in developing and managing that payment plan.
And I was noticing in our mailer, which I'm going to mention in a moment, but we're expecting to collect six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in road. In motor vehicle excise taxes, and that is used completely to offset our road expenses, either in the capital reserves for future projects or in. Current maintenance for summer and winter, so roads are a huge asset and a huge expense. And maybe if people really understand that when they're paying their excise tax, you're helping to fix the roads right here in Reedfield. That's useful, it makes people feel better. I did want to point out, since I've been looking at it, everyone should be receiving, coming up, their mailer. Very cost effective, Eric was able to get this printed for twenty three cents a copy, so please read it, since it's so pricey. It's got a lot of great information in it, Eric flew through all of these things, but when you go into the center, you'll see that we have color coding for those of us who are not colorblind. But it's in italics where it's colored, so that is helpful. But there's a little bit of explanation for all of the things that Eric was just talking about, and you can bring these with you when you vote in person. Or of course can use them when you're voting at home, if you're doing absentee voting. So.
Eric, I have a quick question, is there a PDF version of that on our website?
Not yet, it's it's that new, it will be up shortly, Chris.
Perfect, okay, I gave you a little breather there, Eric.
Thank you.
We're up to the next slide.
I think I'm done talking, so it should be all new.
There's a, there's a, there's a.
Revisions.
Oh, I guess I gotta talk.
Hold on, there's a, hold on, there was a comment in the chat, I think it was from Melissa, and I think she was spanking the Budget Committee. But I could only read the first line, and then it disappeared, so.
Let me see if I can open that up.
Okay, great.
Okay, there is.
A huge thank you to the Budget Committee and Select Board for all your work on the Budget Library, appreciates your time and attention, smiley face.
Smiley face.
Well, we're very happy to accept the thanks. I can go through the L U O revisions for Eric, so the planning board is in charge of all the land use ordinance. And any revisions, it has primarily the things that they revise on an annual basis or changes due to. Language changed by the state, and we need to make sure that our ordinances are compatible with what the state has for current language. And thus they very carefully go through things and revise things, and they are all. Done publicly in meetings and then presented in their own public hearing, not here tonight, but that was held, I believe, at the end of March, maybe beginning of April. Several ordinances are adopted by reference in the land use ordinance, have not been updated in several years, and so they are in. The town warrant this year, those are a telecommunications tower ordinance, a noise standard ordinance, a solar ordinance. And the ordinance regulating storage and land application of sludge and other residuals. And there are probably a few that will need to go in every year, because we have a long list of twenty something or more ordinances, so we try to stay on top of those. They, those are explained in the mailer, and they, is that noticed when you're at the polling place?
That's a question for Kristen.
I believe they are.
Should be, yeah.
It does say you can bring that page of the, you know, with you, also.
And I guess, yeah, so the full ordinance revisions are available at the town office and at the public voting areas.
If anybody really wants to read them. So we are up to closing communications, does the Budget Committee have anything, any member like they'd like to mention?
I think we've discussed this with the Select Board. Before, I think one good follow up to the budget process, when the voting is over and things start to settle down, would be to. Look at the fund balance policy, you know, that two twelfths reserve. We're above that now, but Eric's projections, and that exhibit is not in in this packet. Show that we're we're going to gradually draw that down over time. And I think it's important that everyone have confidence. That whatever policy, whatever our policy goal is, in terms of how much should be in that reserve, that everybody has confidence in that. Because at some point, there may be tension between further drawing on that reserve to keep the. The to keep the, I almost said dues, there's some teaching now. Keep to keep the property tax in, you know, adjustments down, on one hand, which is desirable. But also maintaining a good safety net, which is also desirable, so hopefully we can. We'll have a lot of confidence in what that goal, what that target level ought to be.
Thanks, Marty, anyone from the Select Board? Okay. Teresa, you're the only person here that I'm going to qualify as town staff, would you like to say anything?
I'm all good.
We had our one public comment given to us, so important dates, I guess so, before we do that, I just want to thank Eric and Teresa one more time. This is a long process, it actually starts in the fall, so they only get a few months off before we start planning again. And the, has the audit come in yet?
Not yet.
And so that's still to come, and the process is just always ongoing, but we really appreciate the effort and the time and the. Attention to detail that you both give to the town. I think that I'm saying that for all of us here at the table.
Yep.
We're a very fortunate town to have the staff that we have, and we're very appreciative. As we will, once again, expressing our Christmas gift baskets.
That's not the only way.
Well, we'll provide a weekly paycheck, how's that? Okay, good. So May twelfth, which is coming up in a few days, absentee municipal ballots will be available, the state and RSU ballots will be available a few days later. And on June tenth is town meeting by secret ballot, there is one. Article that takes place, right, to elect the moderator.
Yes, so there's one article that's not officially on the on the ballot, but it is taken care of on the floor.
On the floor, and then the about the meeting is officially open, and at the end of. Voting, which I believe is eight PM, is that correct?
Eight AM to eight PM.
Then the polls will close and everything will be tallied by the machine, and the school ballots will be counted by hand, and Kristen will post the results that evening online. So we thank everybody for being here tonight and for the members of the public that attended, and hope all of you watching this on YouTube at a later date.
Or live.
Or live. Or live, have found very interesting. And with that, I'll call the meeting to a close at seven twenty one. I got the right. So started late and.